All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. The recess is completed. We are going to take out of order the number four, which is action upon an application for a special one-day license for beer and wine to the responsible manager of the EDIC event at the Falmouth Station on Thursday, July 27, 2017. I do want everyone to know that I am the vice-chair of the EDIC board. That has nothing to do with any conflict. It just really means I know a little bit more about this than anyone else. Would like to present Mr. Galasso. Did you want to present or introduce the responsible manager?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Galasso, Chairman of Falmouth EDIC. First, I want to thank the chair and town manager staff for getting our application here before you. This evening was rather rushed and everything, but thank you for hearing us. So this is the grand reopening of the Falmouth Station, which we've been working on for a number of years. You'll all attend on Thursday at 12:30 at the station at 59 Depot Ave. And it is an event that's open to the public. We think it's an event that deserves everyone in our community to come and enjoy the results of renovation of the building. It's an important landmark we feel in our community, so we really didn't want to limit it to anyone. We have been rushing to make the final completion of the building and put the event together. And we have selected Heather Kelly as our manager of the beverage component of the event. And we have local representatives for that here. Heather is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. And I believe it's going to be restricted to beer and wine. The hours will be approximately from noon to 3:00 on Thursday. And Heather can tell you about her qualifications and how she runs her operation.
And just to be specific, this is like the Peter Pan bus station, so everyone knows the one on Main Street.
The one on 59 Depot Ave.
Depot Ave, rather, yes. Thank you. Very much before he sits down, any questions for Mr. Galasso from the board?
You should have a map that shows where it will be. It'll be located inside the building, where eventually we'll have a cafe there. There'll be music, or tuxes will be playing some jazz music for the event, and there'll be food, of course, too.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you for this initiative, Mike. That goes to all of the EDIC.
Thanks.
Ms. Kelly, do you want to just give us an outline about your particular experience and services? Are you TIP certified? All that good stuff.
Yes, we are. Hi, Heather Kelly. I'm the owner, manager of Cape Cod Bar Chefs. We've been in business for three years. I've been in the restaurant business for about 15 years, behind a bar, managing a restaurant. Again, so three years. We're all TIP certified. We hold a Chapter 12C catering liquor license, so all of our bartenders have to be TIP certified. We have to hold a half a million, million-dollar liquor liability insurance. We have to purchase from wholesalers. I do have accounts with L-Nive, Horizon, Martinetti. So all items for this evening, or excuse me, Thursday's event, will be purchased through the wholesaler. Done a handful of events in Falmouth, all over Cape Cod. We're licensed all through Massachusetts. Very familiar with the process, how we have to contact town manager and the chief of police 48 hours prior to the event. And if that's it, if you have any questions for me.
Was there a need for a tent inspection?
A tent inspection? Not that I was aware of, because there wasn't, and we were going to be located inside.
Inside, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, I'm just looking through the paperwork here, and I can see all of your certifications that you provided. It's nice to have someone who's local and from town, so it's great.
A move approval.
Second?
I'm sorry.
Discussion, please.
Oh, sorry. I'll find a discussion.
A little concerned about the precedent we're setting to rush this through, and I'm not trying to suss why there was a need for a rush when the event has been planned for quite a while. And I just worry that other groups are going to be putting us in the same position.
I think there was maybe some understanding with the catering liquor license that normally we would be, our license would be able to provide alcohol without getting the one-day permit. But since it is open to the public and invitation, that's where the confusion kind of came in, I think. So that was kind of the rush at the end. Because normally, I wouldn't have to come.
If it's a private event, there's no reason for you to.
Yeah, there's no reason. But again, because it was open to the public.
I understand perfectly. Thanks.
And it's not a cash bar. It is an open bar, so there will be no cash transactions.
That's good. Thank you. Good explanation.
Okay, thanks.
A move approval?
Think you just increased your attendance.
Second?
All in favor? unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for taking your time.
Good luck, we'll see you soon. Okay, we'll take the first item on the agenda, which is a discussion on biking and walking public safety. We have from, step up, and I'm blanking on your title, sorry.
Yes, my name's Lev Malikoff.
If you could take that mic up there for the TV.
And, so I'm over here?
Yes, you're over there now, thank you, Lev.
All right. My name is Lev Malikoff. I'm with Cape Cod Commission, and I have with me Kyle Bonus from MassRides. I have been involved in what we call smart transportation or alternative transportation with the county since at least 1997. The county commissioners have designated the last week of June as Cape Cod Smart Transportation Week, which we use as an opportunity to showcase all the alternatives, such as biking, walking, using public transit, forming car pools. It's a time when the Cape Cod RTA kicks off their summer, you know, enhanced schedules and more services. It's also a time of year when the weather is usually pretty good, so biking and walking become more attractive. So we have been partnering with the RTA, MassBike, which is the Bike Coalition from Massachusetts, and MassRide, which is a state agency that is supporting commuting options. And Kyle's going to talk a little bit about her program. So in that light, we also want to make sure that people are traveling as safe as they can. And so we have been fortunate in being able to leverage MassRides and the RTAs and other services to provide bicycle safety equipment to cyclists. And I'm going to be giving to your police chief this evening a box of bike lights and other safety equipment that I have with me tonight that can be distributed to folks that need it. I know that the police sometimes see people out at night, and it'd be nice to, instead of giving them a ticket, give them something to help make them safer. And also, you know, the motorists would appreciate that as well, because no one wants to be surprised if somebody's cycling home from their job late at night in dark clothing and they have no safety equipment. So we have a number of those that I'll be distributing. Also provide some of the brochures, which can be handed out to folks. And these provide some great tips on how to interact safely amongst drivers and bicyclists. So anybody drives a car, I would encourage taking a look at this, anyone that rides a bike as well. Basically, the bicycles ride single file on the right, forward motorist, how to pass safely. Don't open your car door when you're in a parking lane without looking to make sure that not a cyclist is coming beside you. A whole bunch of safety tips there. Another effort that has yielded fruition is a bike map showing all the villages on Cape Cod, bicycle facilities, as well as access to the public transit. So this is something that we work with the RTA on as well. And so maybe I'll let Kyle talk a little bit about her program and how it helps bike and pedestrian safety.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, Lev. Hi, I'm Kyle. I work for the MassDOT, MassRide program. So we're focused on commuting options across the state. My territory is the Cape and Islands, which, as you all know, is completely different than the rest of the state. So typically, we work with companies with 100-plus employees. Obviously, the case is kind of limited on that front. So I started having meetings with resorts, and the issue of bike safety with J-1 students consistently came up through all of these meetings. So luckily, I was given permission to start planning for bike safety events with resorts. So the month of June, I worked with Waukawasit, Ocean Edge, Channel Bars Inn, and the Town of Yarmouth, and was able to host nine events attached to the orientations for the J-1s at the resorts. I thought, huge success. I've heard great feedback. We worked with the town police. We brought in MassBike, the statewide biking organization, to do trainings. They really focused on, you know, 10 short points of, like, the most important bike safety tips to let the students know. Obviously, the Cape is completely, the U.S. is completely different when it comes to bike safety. They were great events. I think they were super successful. I've heard a lot of feedback from the police departments that they've already been seeing students with lights at night, which was definitely the biggest issue, riding on the right side of the road. We were able to print out large maps and go over with the students the safe routes, what intersections were important to avoid. The Cape Cod RTA was present at most of the events, just because they had discounted passes for the students. So it was pretty much just a hands-on, all comprehensive event that really, I think, the Cape was lacking for an issue that's pretty important to everyone. So I thought it was a great success. I would love to do something in Falmouth. Probably next summer, I think, makes most sense, just at the beginning of the season.
But this is perfect. It's a great time for you to really interact with our, you know, our larger organizations that employ J-1s. And I kind of want to give a little bit of background on our invitation here, because certainly, you know, I've seen you in the county, and the presentation was terrific. And I want to recognize Tom Caher and the RTA for the participation there, and for you, of course, coming so late. But this, in terms of Falmouth, you know, we really focused on it with a pretty tragic event in terms of some of our late-night workers were just walking on the side of the road, and there was a terrible accident. And Nell Fields was, in fact, I want to ask Selectman Braga to talk about how she and I were asked to start bringing some attention, and that Michael Kisparian from the Cape Cod Chamber is also involved. I don't know, Megan, you want to?
Yeah, just some conversations that came up after this accident was, you know, obviously, I think the community really mobilized, and Nell Fields and a number of other individuals in the faith community started to come together to try and fundraise for these individuals. Our police department has always been, they actually carry around lights at night to give to anyone they come upon that doesn't have that. So it's always been on the radar, but I don't think we've ever had really what you're talking about, these comprehensive kind of welcoming training events, which is really where the conversation started to move, in talking with some of the folks from Bike Ways. Pamela Rothstein, in particular, was saying, you know, this is really a conversation that Bike Ways should be part of, and they're absolutely right. So bringing, Sue and I started to talk to Michael at the chamber, the police department, folks at Bike Ways about how can we bring all of that together to do, essentially, I guess, we were talking about doing really what you're already doing.
Right.
But having those orientation events at the beginning of the season for these students, so that they have exactly what you're talking about, some resources, both the tangible, you know, the vests or lights and things like that, but also the maps about how, you know, best to kind of traverse through a town. And while we don't have as many of those big resorts, we do have a lot of other companies, you know, Stop &amp; Shop employs quite a few people, some of the other grocery stores. Seacrest, you know, has quite a few individuals that they employ. So really, you know, these trainings that you've done would be so relevant and helpful. And that's part of the conversation we've been having, is how do we bring that resource to the students who come and work here, so it's both a safe experience and also an enjoyable one for them, so that we continue to have that. It's a real resource for our community, obviously, not just economically, but the cultural exchange and all of that is something that we want anyone who sends their young person here to, you know, for it to be safe and for them to go back with good memories. And so we're hoping that maybe we can build on what you've done in the other communities and offer that here.
I'm definitely looking to, obviously, I started with the large resorts just to manage. I mean, it was a lot of work putting them together, and it's the first time I've done it. So I'm definitely looking to expand next summer. I will say, I did do an event at Stop &amp; Shop, and I found that the events at the orientations with the resorts, obviously, those students are mandated to be there. It is a large, I think some of the trainings I had upwards of 100 students. So that was great.
So maybe you have to work it a little differently here.
Yes, but I think with the support of the town, and like, I know Falmouth has great communities, I think it might be more realistic to do it, you know, a more open event for all the employers. And that was the initial goal, but it was a challenge, too. As I started talking to someone like Stop &amp; Shop, you know, they have so many shifts. The students, that's typically like their second job. So I think it will be a challenge, but definitely doable.
And we have a real commitment from the Chamber of Commerce to assist, because they are somewhat uniquely positioned to work with some of the businesses to make sure that we kind of get those numbers, you know, kind of maximize those numbers with that challenge that you're raising. So I think that we have, I think we have the various, you know, groups really committed to it, police department, Bike Ways, Chamber of Commerce, you know. So I think those people will be on board to support the work that you're doing.
And I want to bring the chief into the conversation, if you don't mind. Chief, I know you have an important event coming up already, and you're also, obviously, the expert in Falmouth on what would be, what we should ask for.
Yeah, we have our, the event you're talking about is our open house at the police department.
Absolutely.
And we invite a lot of groups to have tables at the police department so they can share those experiences. Appreciate it that we're going to be getting more lights, because we are running low on these lights, because we've had them for the last several years, and we've been giving them out, and have, in fact, done pretty much what you've been doing, but just at a smaller scale, given a bunch of them to the Seacrest, the different hotels that we are aware of that have employees. And again, my officers do ride around with these lights in their Cruises at night, and they have stopped and given them out to people to keep them safe. That accident that night, again, it's an education piece, and we've done a PSA with FCTV recently this fall, and it's on our website, about bicycle safety and dealing with the bicyclists and the motorists. They both have to be responsible. And we also just recently put some information on there from AAA on pedestrian safety, bicycle safety and all that. So, you know, people can go to our website, our Facebook page, and you have a lot of great information, similar to what these pamphlets are. And I'm sure that night, we will be passing out more of these for those people that need them. It's all about keeping people safe. It's similar to what we've been saying with the motorists, some of it is distraction. We have bicyclists, we have pedestrians who are distracted, and we're trying to educate them on that, too, as well as the motorists. And then if you are a pedestrian, we're pushing the safety that the sidewalks around. Also, wear light clothing and things like that. So those are the educational pieces that we're trying to do in the police department. But again, as Megan has said, having the chamber on board, having the Bike Ways Committee and other committees on board, it's a team method, and maybe we can get that word out there and save lives.
Much appreciated. Any questions from the board?
I guess, two related ones. I guess I've also heard that there's been some more painting on the bike path about mileage and things like that. And I also know some surf drive road, there are now some very informal signs saying "bike path coming." Do anyone know where this is coming from, as to why these additional signs are being put up there? I assume it's not the Bike Ways Committee, but...
Not aware of it. I also cycle, and happened to be down by the surf drive the other day, and sorry, it was kind of like, interesting. It looks like it was done by, I don't know, I don't know, because it's not, doesn't appear to be professionally done. It's not horrible, but you're right, it's some additional signage. Where it came from, don't know.
And what about the traffic laws for bikers? Sorry, Scott.
And then I want to give Mr. McConney a chance on Public Works.
Yeah, Scott Lindell with the Bike Ways Committee. I pointed this out to DPW soon after it happened, the 4th of July weekend. I think they're going to get around to doing it. I noticed that they have blackened out, if you look at that image on the surf drive, on the roadway, they've blackened it out. I haven't seen any improvements of the bike way, though. And what upset me when the scrawls were there is some of them are accurate and some of them are downright dangerous. If you're driving north, biking north on Locust Street, it points you, so to the Locust Street crossing, it points you up Woods Hole Road, up Locust Street, actually, to downtown, which I would never advocate in a bicycle situation. They should go all the way up to the Kathy Lee Bates Connector and into town, and that's where our directional signage should take them.
Very good point. Peter, if you wouldn't mind commenting?
Yes, Peter McConney, Deputy Director of Public Works. I just wanted to say, wherever the painting came from on the roadways, it was neat, it's very legible, it's somewhat large, it's not massive, but it's somewhat large. So whoever did it was trying to be meaningful and trying to help by doing this. But it would be, you know, it makes a lot more work for us for Public Works, it makes it more dangerous on the roadways, especially as Scott was saying, if it's misforming to people on the roadways. There's a formal process. If someone wants to have markings on the bike path or on surf drive, it's the Traffic Advisory Committee, and then it comes to us. We have, at Public Works, we have brand-new paint machines, we have a brand-new trailer outfit with all the equipment for lettering on the roadways and what have you. So we just got it this past year. So if there is more striping or if there is, you know, roadway paint that's needed, it's just a request to the Traffic Advisory, and we can put it through to Public Works. It's a process that goes through, but it's something that we're working with. It does make it dangerous. I think we've noticed it probably within the first week that it came out. But it wasn't scribbled, it was neatly drawn on the street. So someone was, did it intentionally to, in their mind, to try to help the traffic. But I think it becomes more of a problem for us, and sure, for the police department, too. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for your input. That's a very important point. Thank you, Scott.
And just, if I may, just on that point, I mean, Bike Ways, in conjunction with DPW, has worked hard with other signage. And so really, you know, it's a process that a lot of thought goes into it, a lot of research. I know Patty, you know, spent a long time coming up with those signs, talking to the DPW about proper height and all of that. So again, you know, as you're noting, you know, clearly, probably someone who thought they were being helpful, because it's not insulting graffiti or anything like that, but it in fact undermines a really important work that Bike Ways is doing with the DPW. So if that person is a concerned citizen listening, there are other avenues for that.
Yeah, there's a full process with the Traffic Advisory. It goes through, I'd say for most of the signage and the striping, usually, it goes through relatively quickly, and we get it on the street. Now, we don't have to call on our striping contractors, we can do it, we can do all that detail in-house.
Right.
So my second question has to do with the traffic laws for bikers. Should they be obeying all traffic laws the way a car does? And my particular pet peeve is on Siffwissah Road, when they're coming down that hill, and they don't stop at that stop sign on the corner of Crest Harbor Road and just fly right through. Am I wrong that that should be, every single biker should be stopping there?
You are correct. And this guide is a very helpful guide. Bicyclists, when they're in the road, are vehicles, and they should be obeying the same laws as motor vehicles. There are some exceptions or additional laws and regulations as they apply to cyclists, such as the dooring regulation, motors must look back before they open the door. So other than those extra protections, because a bicyclist is a much more vulnerable user, they are still required to stop, they're still required to signal, everything that a motor vehicle does. If they get to a position where they feel like they're unsafe, it's advised they pull off to the side and become a pedestrian. Once they get off their bike, they become a pedestrian. So, you know, there's ways that they can address their own concerns, but you're correct that they need to, you know, behave as a vehicle operator, they're bicycle drivers.
Yeah, I understand these bikers are out there for good exercise, so actually stopping and starting again would be more exercise than coasting down the hill at 20 miles an hour and saying, yep, I see nothing, I can fly right through it. But it just worries me that the, how easy that accident could happen at that intersection. And I think the other place that we do have is with the flashing lights, where two bikers go through, because the cars see them stop, a biker behind them thinks, oh, the cars are stopped, I can just keep running right on through. The cars don't see that third or fourth biker, and that's the other place where I wish we could encourage the bikers to be aware. It still is a, actually, a state highway that they are now zipping across.
Very good point.
I think the education you guys are helping with that will be very, very helpful.
Absolutely.
Ma'am Chair, could I interject on the Selectman's comments about bicycle safety as well? I noticed, one, in the Woods Hole area, this particular concern to me is where the Shiny Sea Bike Way ends, and a number of bikes are spill out onto the street. They routinely go the wrong way. You know, they go counter to traffic on, I believe that's Railroad Ave.
Lascom.
Lascom, thank you, Doug. On Lascom, and are frequently in harm's way. I see them down there, the cars are doing dodge-ems, it's a narrow street, there's parking on both sides, it's one-way, and all they need to do is get off their bicycles, I presume, and walk on the sidewalk, which, and there's a sidewalk on both sides of that street, and once they get down that relatively short stretch, they'll be in good shape. But so many of them just come spilling out, driving away, and mom and dad and little kids, too. And it's quite a frightening aspect down there.
I appreciate your comment. The Cape Cod Commission is beginning to work with the town and the village association in Woods Hole to look at these very issues with circulation, bicycle, pedestrian safety, and other issues.
Very good point. Mr. Scott? Yeah? And Peter, you wanted another comment?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So two things. One, Doug, you mentioned the potential conflicts and potential harm to somebody at the crossing at Locust Street, and I totally agree with you. I know for a fact that the police are starting to do some better monitoring around there. They have plans to do both enforcement for cars that aren't stopping appropriately and for bicyclists that aren't stopping appropriately at that crosswalk. So enforcement and education are ongoing. It's going to have, yeah, something you have to do every summer, and hopefully, if we can get the local populace to at least follow the rules, perhaps the tourists will see that good example, and that will build. On your comment, Julian, it's a, you know, it's long been an issue at the end of Woods Hole. It's particularly exacerbated because all the parking was removed and, for bicyclists, so they got to go somewhere. I think the last couple of weeks, the Steamship Authority has put in room for about 50 bikes to park there. On a weekend, you will see 100, 150 or more parked there. And where are they going to go? It's a big problem. The Bike Ways with Woods Hole is putting in 20 new, well, room for 40 more bike spots there next to, on School Street, next to Redfield in the next couple of weeks. It's still not going to solve the problem. And at our committee meeting on August 2nd, this is one of the topics, it's been raised by some of the local residents, and we'll be working with Lev and the groups that are working on the whole village concept there about this. But it might be time to look at how different, how differently sign and control traffic there. What I asked... there. What I asked the Steamship Authority when they were making their new exit and repaving stuff there was to put a big arrow on that fenceway that goes to Railroad Avenue, that points people uphill. Doesn't mean they'll follow it, but right now, there's very little guidance about, except a sign on the other side of the road, for everybody saying one way. But I think that people miss it.
Sure, Megan?
Yeah, and just even, you know, as that area kind of changes, as it will in the next, you know, the coming years, but, you know, really thinking about, you know, do we put some additional signage that, you know, directs people to either places to park their bikes or indicates to dismount and walk your bike if you're going to the left, you know, things like that. Because a lot of the folks who are using the Shining Sea and are coming into Woods Hole, I mean, many of them are tourists, so that may be their first time that they're really interacting with that space, or haven't interacted in that space in a while, if they do it once a year or something like that. So I think that, you know, that's where some of the conversation about appropriate signage and the education piece comes in.
I failed to mention that the long-term plan for the Steamship Authority is for the bike way to end right by the water side. And there'll be a park with, I think they're planning 150 bicycle parking spots. So that will be, I think, much clearer. We can't live with this ambiguity for a little while, or at least create more parking there in the short term to cover us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I have one other follow-up? Just a question for Lev and/or Kyle. I know we've been talking, focusing on bicycle safety fundamentally. Do you get involved in pedestrian safety programs? Because that was an element of the accident as well, which we referred to earlier, was pedestrians choosing not to walk on the sidewalk, for instance.
I think Kyle can help fill that in as well. I do want to say, you know, because that is a concern, again, pedestrians are very vulnerable users as well, of course. So the nice thing about the lights, if somebody, you know, decides, I'm not going to ride my bike for my job tonight, you know, because I can actually walk, I can actually take that right off my bike and clip it right onto their, you know, belt loop or the back of their ball cap or something. Because that's going to really help draw a motor's attention that there's something going on over there.
I would agree. I think the huge issue with the students are, they're leaving work with their all-black uniforms. So being seen is a huge aspect, but also relating to them that people are on vacation here, they're not looking for you, they want to get to the beach. Americans drive differently than most other countries. So I think that's a huge thing we focus on at these trainings. And also just talking to them about things that have happened in the past, because a lot of these students, it's the first time they've even been here and working. So yes, it's focused on bike safety, but we definitely address pedestrian safety as well. Because it's, not all the students are biking, so... And the police are there as well, so they're able to answer any questions they have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming. It was a long night, and it's a little bit of a way for both of you. So we're really grateful, and we want the opportunity to be able to head off next year with all this education under our belt. And thanks also to BikeWay for working with these folks already. Thanks, Scott.
So the kids that were hit recently, I'm pretty sure they were on the sidewalk and the driver went off the road. Isn't that not correct?
No. But the chief can...
Chief Duncan.
Can I just ask, are we going to be able to keep some of those pamphlets?
I'm going to leave all these for you.
Perfect, thank you.
We have some reflective ankle gowns, too, you're really lucky.
Thank you so much.
With the police chief.
Yep.
Great.
Share some with the chamber.
The accident's still under investigation, but by the time of the accident, they were not on the sidewalk, they're on the opposite side of the street where there was a sidewalk.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
They were on the side, away from the sidewalk.
They were on the sidewalk, it was on the left, they were on the right.
Huh, okay, thank you.
So it's probably, as Kyle said, it's probably an education piece, too, because again, from, I'm saying, different countries don't have sidewalks, but different rules, different regulations, and different things like that.
Will they walk against traffic or with traffic?
With the traffic.
Very important. Thank you very much, Chief. Really appreciate all your work.
I just want to add one thing that, just to the piece about Nell Fields and the folks who have assisted her. To date, they've raised about, a little bit over $3,000 to help these students, so to defray some of the costs of lost wages, et cetera. So, you know, just a nice, you know, commitment by our community to not just the safety piece, but responding to a difficult incident. So I just want to thank Nell and all the folks who've worked with us.
The last leader men in the faith community.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, folks, is to announce the November 2017 Annual Town Meeting schedule. And you all have a copy, I'll just read it for the audience. Selectmen will announce the annual town meeting on Monday, July 24, 2017. The warrant will be closed Friday, August 25, 2017. Selectmen will vote articles and execute the warrant on Monday, September 11, 2017. The articles will be published on Friday, September 15, 2017. Selectmen will vote the article recommendations on Monday, September 25, 2017. Selectmen will publish the warrant with recommendations Friday, October 20, 2017. And town meeting will be Monday, November 6, 2017. Mr. Suso, any tips?
I can say it's hard to believe we're already there, isn't it?
It is. And the other thing, I think, is for, you know, committees or anyone who has initiatives or works with warrant articles, I mean, it really is an early schedule to get started, because the close again is August 25, 2017. So please take note of that.
That's a few days earlier than it has been traditionally. As you know, Madam Chair, generally, it's been in the first week of September. But to make this schedule work, working backwards from November 6, when the November Town Meeting will kick off, that is the schedule we need to meet. With the Selectmen's concurrence, of course.
Our order.
Indeed.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda...
We do have the order to vote to approve.
So sorry, I was sitting right ahead here.
And will we approve?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that. The next item on the agenda, under summary of actions, is consideration for purchase option for 350 Old Barnstable Road. Mr. Suso, you want to tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, there are some affordable housing units in Falmouth for which the town has a, is in possession of a deed restriction. So that if those units come up and are turned over and are unable to sell to an affordable buyer, a qualified individual for the affordable housing, they can make those available to the town for a right of first refusal. I know we forwarded some information from Associate Town Council Pat Harris earlier, that talked a little bit about the Housing Assistance Corporation. I think I have the right term. HAC is their acronym, of course. And the process that they went through over a 90-day period attempting to secure a qualified buyer. Peter could make a few comments about that. Peter, if you would.
Just in terms of the history and, you know, why, just to sort of finish the action that the board is being asked to consider today, the town has a right of first refusal. There's, and there's a 90-day window of opportunity to exercise that right of first refusal to purchase this affordable unit. And it's that 350 Old Barnstable Road. We received the correspondence from Representative at HAC April 10. And at that time, they were letting us know that the owner wished to sell, and certainly the owner was aware of the restrictions. And the Housing Assistance Corporation was working to find an eligible buyer. They did write that they are usually successful in that endeavor, so we were surprised when we heard a couple of weeks ago that they still had not found an eligible buyer. So that puts us in the situation that we're in, which is that the 90-day window closes on the 27th. So we apologize, we don't really, we're not giving the board much of an opportunity to do anything about this. There's still a window of opportunity where an eligible buyer, HAC is still looking for an eligible buyer. The owner needs to secure an appraisal before selling at a market rate, which becomes an opportunity after that 90-day window closes. So, you know, fingers crossed, we're still hopeful that a buyer is found. But if not, then the current owner has an option to sell under the deed restriction. There is no windfall here for the current owner, so any value in excess of the price that's allowed under the deed restriction will go to the town rather than the individual owner. But nevertheless, that's sort of small consolation, because we will lose the affordable unit.
And the next person who could then sell it without a restriction?
Absolutely. Well, and to start with, the buyer will not be a qualified buyer. And the next, yeah, and there will be no restrictions going forward, correct?
And so the board is being asked today to endorse the future sale after the expiration date of the 27?
Essentially, your choices tonight are either to buy, direct us to buy the unit or not buy the unit. That's it.
Can we, excuse me, can we buy the unit without town meeting approval?
No.
No. So the timing is actually...
That's the difficulty with this process. You're quite correct, Megan, is that there's really no way to react unless you set up a special town meeting authorizing you, you know, affirming that you do so. And that's, you have a, it's a narrow window.
Oh, go ahead, Sam.
Is there a way to do that as a general matter that would cover these sorts of properties so that there would be a segregated fund, so that it would actually have some kind of effect for this board? That there would be a town meeting approval that in the event that this situation comes up, the Board of Selectmen can authorize such a purchase so that these homes stay in the affordable housing roles? Is there, who would look into that?
I'd be happy to. I could probably address it. I know that under the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which is a state sort of established way of creating what we have in terms of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, they have that right to act as an independent board. In fact, there are some towns that actually purchased properties and refurbished them and then repurposed them. So there are avenues for doing that. And I'm a little surprised that we can't do that under the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, using CPC and Selectmen working together with the idea that this would then be, you know, kept as an affordable housing project.
No, I'm sure we just recently set up a fund specifically to react to these type of real estate situations. So I think there's funding that's available, that was funded through CPC. And I don't remember exactly who was charged to administer it. I think it was the Housing Trust, because they are always looking for opportunities. So there's a fund that's in place, that money is already designated for these purposes.
Does the purchaser have to be an individual?
Yeah.
Or can it be, it can't be a trust fund? I mean, that would not be an eligible buyer. But could a Affordable Housing Trust group be considered eligible buyer?
One of the non-profits, Dr. Prof.
Yeah, I, so there are two sort of, two separate questions. One is, could the town purchase it through the Housing Trust? I think that is an option. I'm not entirely certain, because I'm not as familiar with the Falmouth Trust as I am with the standard state trust, as Sam had indicated. I think that, I think that probably is legally a possibility, but we haven't done the due diligence to know if that's a wise purchase at this point. So the timing is, you know, the conundrum here is one of timing. We know a month ago that we might want to consider buying this property. We could have the due diligence in place to be in a position to act on this. And the trust is the Board of Selectmen.
But wasn't there a problem with her, I'm just, you know, going back, but I thought there was some issue with her notice not being...
Complete.
Very minimal. It's, she said, you know, something like, whatever, for example, $300,000. It should have said $300,050. I mean, it was sort of a minor, a minor issue. And I think, you know, part of the problem is, it doesn't seem to be a real process to monitor these situations.
Housing Coordinator.
Right. But the timetable is also a little bit problematic, that April 28, what could we have done except, it would have been too late to get on our warrant?
Correct.
For the town meeting we had. And so in some ways, they sort of had us over a hard place anyway, because the only way we could have purchased it would be to call a special town meeting.
Well, unless, unless we can use the trust, which I think we can.
I'm bothered by the fact that they weren't able to find the purchaser, given the need for housing. I just really question how much this was advertised and networked. I mean, it hasn't come up in the Falmouth Affordable Housing, excuse me, Affordable Housing Committee, because I'm a pretty regular attendee there, and it's never been agenda-ed. And I, you know, then the question becomes, does our human resources know about this? Our department know it? How about, you know, Falmouth Housing Trust, Falmouth Housing Corp., those people that are dealing with people who are looking for housing? We haven't heard anything about this. And I, you know, I'm a little disappointed that it hasn't surfaced a lot sooner in the network of people who are dealing with people looking for housing.
I think that we should still make a motion to make the purchase and try to preserve the affordability of this. We know, we're talking all the time about affordable housing being important. I'd say we should make a motion, I would like to propose, I make a motion, that we would move forward the purchase if it's viable and feasible with the Housing Trust or whatever entity might have access to those funds that were designated for this purpose.
Do you think we need to have some kind of appraisal done within the next day or two, so that we know that if our asking price is $168, the appraisal doesn't come in at 80? And that's the due diligence where, if it's within...
Well, I can argue with that, but is there still time?
We have three days.
I bet that someone can go take a look at the property. It's a condo. They're going to pull the comps, they're going to go take a look at it, and then they're going to apply whatever they have to apply to it to get a sense of... I mean, I agree that I think we just had a two-hour meeting, which almost, you know, a third of it was about affordable housing. And this is exactly the type of unit that attracts sort of the demographic of people that we, you know, this is a unit for, you know, my first purchase was a condo, right? It's a great unit for sort of working families, you know, starting a family, that type of thing. And to just kind of let it go is very frustrating.
You've got the school department, the police department, the fire department. I mean, we have all these organizations that have employees who are probably looking for a piece of property like this, that might fit their needs at this stage in their lives. Really bothers me that it wasn't adequately publicized.
And I think that the point Selectman Braga made with respect to the notice not being technically correct is another issue that certainly has been raised. So I think if, you know, if the motion that Doug made were to be seconded, you know, I think that, you know, that would be the directive. And I think that, you know, secondarily, we want to have this process reviewed. And I don't think we should wait for the housing coordinator to be hired. I think that should be done immediately, so that we're not caught, again, with this juxtaposition. Certainly, a housing coordinator person can make a better process and tweak it, but I think those two things...
It's actually, I mean, my thinking there is that the housing coordinator is doing the monitoring. That's part of what the job task is, is this exact thing, monitor these properties. So they would get this, see this notice from April 10, and get on the horn and prod HAC and make sure HAC is doing everything that they can, work our own network internally, and perhaps do, you know, as a parallel path, start the due diligence so that we can be in a position to purchase it if that's what comes about. But right now, everyone's really pretty busy. And it's hard for us to do all the things that are immediate that we need to do now, and run a parallel on, well, maybe HAC won't succeed in selling this property, or maybe we need to assist HAC in doing their job. And maybe HAC has done everything that they possibly could, and the narrow window of income eligibility and some particulars about this unit made it unattractive. I don't know.
Sure, that could be. So that's a, that's a very good point. Does anyone want to second the motion?
Should we modify that motion and say that it's subject to appraisal or review, at least by the Assessor's Department?
Well, I think the process is a known, there's a known process already that we don't have to suggest.
I think your, I think your original motion that we...
And the only thing I would then still modify is that we purchase it for resale to remain as an affordable unit.
Right. And that is the reason, because it is already in that.
Right. Not because I want to be in the housing business.
I don't think we have to put a contingency on it. There may not be, you know, a legal road forward to do this. But I would like to at least authorize the town manager to pursue it. And I would second that.
And the intent would be to resell, but I don't know. I don't know what would happen.
Madam Chair, if I might, I think in order for this vote to put us in a position to complete the transaction within the three days, I think we need a dollar amount. And I can, I am prepared to recommend one.
I think what's being suggested... I think what's being suggested is a little bit different, since the notice has a technical problem, and so there's a timing issue that goes back the three months, I think what the Board is suggesting is that the, that, a directive for a purchase, and that the details would be worked out by the Town Manager along with Town Council.
Okay, so tonight you're directing us to pursue it, not to, you're not voting the transaction tonight, so there would be another Board of Selectmen vote required, and if that, if the notice is imperfect or if the unit hasn't otherwise sold, the seller could, and that's, I suppose, another op, another way, another scenario how this could play out, is that even if the town's right of first refusal has expired in three days, if as a practical matter, this seller hasn't found a buyer, there's still a window of opportunity potentially for the town to purchase the unit. So you're just giving us direction to do the due diligence to pursue a purchase, there would be a separate Board of Selectmen vote?
Correct, because it's the Board's position with the information from Town Council right now, that the right of first refusal time is not three days. It's, it's, it would be 90, 90 days from a new correct notice being sent out, so that's the Board's position.
Right, I think, I think that what we got from Town Council, from Attorney Harris, is that there is, you know, a technical deficiency in the notice, and so that, you know, maybe, and again, the practical piece that you're raising is, we're really talking about if it takes us a week to do some due diligence, it takes, if it takes us five days, you know, does a buyer suddenly appear, if no one appeared at 168,000, does a buyer now appear at market value of whatever it might be?
Right, and there is another step that the seller actually has to obtain an appraisal in order to complete a market sale, and as of, I believe it was last week, the, according to the HAC representative that I corresponded with, she did not have an appraisal at that time.
So we're still in possibly a period of some viable action?
Exactly.
And there's no benefit to her to sell it to somebody else?
Correct, she's...
Not financially, no.
Is it a benefit to a Realtor? Does anybody know, does a Realtor get a commission on that?
Based on the sale price, probably.
HAC would have gotten a commission if they're involved.
Okay, I just, I'm just posing that, I really don't know.
But if it's a market sale, there probably is a benefit for a Realtor.
I was just wondering.
I'm not certain of that good question, but no, the, you know, the seller, because this is the, the seller, I believe, back about five years ago tried to sell the unit at that time as well, and the seller has not indicated any resistance to meeting the obligations of the deed restriction, she's happy to keep it as affordable, it just hasn't happened.
Absolutely, totally get it, okay.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for one further clarification?
Sure.
I believe what I'm hearing is that we're presuming that this does not require Town Meeting action.
Correct.
And we just, we need to verify that with Town Council.
Exactly, exactly.
I would feel more comfortable having the motion include to execute a purchase and sale for a dollar amount, in the event that that's the only option we have and we have time to do it, that if, because Pat, I think, was a little uncertain as to whether that deficiency was sufficient, and it could be that on the 27th, we've actually, by taking no action, lost an opportunity to keep this as deed restricted, and I just, if we don't vote tonight, it's too late.
So did, Peter, did you have a number, did you indicate you were, you had a number you could, you were able to...
So the, I'm told by Gail Kelly, or at the Housing Assistance Corporation, that the maximum resale price on this unit is 168,463, so that's the maximum affordable to keep it as an affordable unit.
I would include that in the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
And I would entertain that discussion from Selectman Jones about whether this is our only opportunity, because it might be.
That's a good point. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. You naps, thank you. Next on the agenda, reports?
Well, I took...
Does anyone want to give a report?
I just want to report that I took a nice back ride with Scott Lindell and Pat and Leonard Johnson yesterday, and looked at the East-West Connector from Palmer Avenue through Trotting Park over to Trotting Park Road, down the sidewalk to where we cross at the crosswalk in front of the, what's now the 711, and then through a relatively newly constructed path that goes towards T Ticket School, and almost all the way to Maravista Ave, but there's a point where the paving stops and it turns to grass, just about 50 yards short of the parking lot, and according to Mr. Lindell, the, there was some concern that some neighbors didn't like the idea of that path connecting all the way to the parking lot and connecting out to the road, it seems like, sort of a shame that it's almost complete, but looks like it's not going to be complete, and that was a little surprising to me, I'm not sure if anybody else is aware of that.
That's going to be an agenda item, probably for the next meeting.
Okay.
Sam?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I did attend the Tony Andrews Working Group for the last couple of weeks, and I just want to thank Peter for showing up at the last one and helping that group understand that they are going to have to go by the state regulations for procurement, because there was a lot of misinformation, they had one set of assumptions, and they were quite disappointed, but thanks to Peter coming and kind of laying it out and saying, here are the limitations that you're going to have to work around, I think they suddenly, you know, recognized the challenges and could begin to see a road forward on how they can, you know, help in this process of turning Tony Andrews Farm into a significant public education and destination, and also just preserving that whole farming culture that we've had in this community for, since its existence, really, so just, that's all.
Good point.
I just, just briefly, really kind of excited, Health and Human Services is looking at some collaborative work with maybe Falmouth Service Center, along with WECAN, that's inside the Falmouth Service Center, to perhaps give some seed money for a program trying to really combat outmigration, you know, so to keep people working here, maybe giving a little bit of money if they need to finish, take a class to finish a certification, or some type of program to sort of facilitate and solidify their employability, so, you know, Falmouth Service Center already, and Health and Human Services already really assist, you know, and have been assisting with, say, payments for rent, one-time payment for rent and things like that, but this is taking a different look at it, more long-term investment in getting people to a place where they are more employable, or they're employable at a higher rate of wage, so pretty exciting work that they're working on there to hopefully see how the program goes forward, so some discussions there, nothing's finalized, but it was exciting to see some, sort of a new take on the challenge of outmigration.
Very smart, in fact, Penny Doobie is doing a survey, because that would be equally, I think, applicable to older workers who might need certification, it's not just younger folks, so look for that. Anything, Doug, before the Town Manager?
Just quickly report that I had a very good meeting with Mr. Johnson, Staub, Mr. Olenek, Mr. Alfonso, and Mr. Duffy that happened.
One other thing I failed to mention was a nice meeting that we had with Mr. Lindell, Patty Johnson, and Dylan Fernandez with regard to both the East-West Connector and also the ramifications of the bike path extending to Bourne, and Dylan is going to do a lot of research and investigating as to what the possibilities are, so, he's a hard-working representative.
And Dave Viera has been also working with the Selectmen on that particular, you know, initiative, so there's, you know, I think both representatives are really doing a lot in the community. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a written report I've submitted to the Board, and just happy to let that stand as is, I think Peter has another comment, however, about CPC issue on the housing piece.
Oh, could you just mention the Dunk Works, the Lieutenant Governor was here at HUI, and that was just such an incredible thing, you and I were both there, but I'd like to get your take on it.
Oh, yes, just for the Board, the, 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 for what the HUI calls the Dunk Works, they'd received a very substantial grant of funds from the state to pursue this advanced marine manufacturing and research facility at the Smith Lab in Woods Hole, and it was fascinating opportunity, the Lieutenant Governor, as Madam Chair mentioned, was in attendance as well, and the state was really talking about the extraordinary opportunities with the blue economy, as represented by all the great work that HUI and their collaborating entities are doing, and it really involves the 3D printers and similar components like that, that can complete processes that now are in the past have taken months to do, it can be done in a matter of weeks or less, and it's really an extraordinarily cost, extraordinarily cost-efficient approach to manufacturing and very creative, so HUI with the state's assistance is on the cutting edge there, and it was terrific, I know for Sue and I both to be able to attend and congratulate all and welcome Lieutenant Governor, and our thanks to all our colleagues at HUI for their continued fine work.
And the focus to really allowing, you know, small businesses to take advantage of this technology, and it's happening right here, and Mr. Johnson, Staub, please.
I wish we could have ended on that note, because I'm afraid I'm going to take us backwards just a moment, as we were concluding our conversation on the unit, I remembered that part of the Housing Trust expenditure process is technically, it's supposed to start with the Community Preservation Committee making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. That's, and I'm not suggesting, you know, that the, that we need to undo the vote or anything, but I just wanted to publicly say that we are aware that the Community Preservation Committee has a role in this, and we will need to get it to them right away, and perhaps even ask them to schedule an emergency meeting.
And, and please, of course, let the Board know that the timing couldn't be helped, we wish it had been otherwise, and just want to make a quick mention that you were the star speaker at the West Falmouth Village Association meeting, and we did also have the East Falmouth Village Association meeting, so they're all happening now, I think Maravista is coming up, if anyone could attend, that would be great, and any other associations that are having their summer meetings, please let us know if you are, you know, certainly the Board would love to attend, you know, so that we can learn more about your association, and if you'd like any information or anyone from the town to give a presentation, we're happy to do so.
I'm sorry, can I say one other, this is very, this is making me think about this with meetings, I have been leaving my Fridays open for meeting with constituents, whether it's individuals or groups, so, you know, usually folks who've reached out via email, I'll connect with them, but if, but if individuals have concerns, either again as kind of a group of people, please email me, I can meet at other times other than Fridays, but I've blocked Fridays out for the summer, it was really to have fun, but I've been using them for meetings because it's usually a good time, kind of early in the morning for people to kind of at the end of the week meet, and so I'm happy to do that, it's really a great way to kind of dive in a little bit deeper about things that we just sort of via email or in these settings just kind of touch upon lightly, so hopefully I've had some really wonderful meetings so far, and I really welcome anyone who would like to meet with me to do so.
Absolutely.
I'd be happy to do that too on a Friday, as long as it's at the Quarter Deck or somewhere.
It is, isn't it, someone said it was National Tequila there.
It is tonight, yes.
I don't know, somebody's going to have a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Holiday in Falmouth opened year-round for your business and travel needs. We provide a full restaurant and accommodations for banquets, holiday parties, weddings, corporate events, seminars, and more. Featuring Casey Bar &amp; Grill, where guests or Falmouth residents can enjoy our selection of local craft beers, cocktails, and a variety of pub food from our menu. Holiday in Falmouth, your home away from home.